Okay, welcome everyone for today's council meeting for Thursday, May first, two thousand and twenty five, six thirty four P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Alma Beltran.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember, um, Janie Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Solorio. Treasurer Ishmael Spandola.
Present.
Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have on our agenda, let's see here, presentations Javier, yeah, go ahead. Are you gonna get to the podium? Do you have anything? Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
So I was gonna do a general projects presentation, but this is only for T C P because it's, it's a lot, just for the one project, but so yeah, if we can get started, so. Um, I'll go, I'll go over the, the general part of the project and I'll dive in afterwards to each one of the sites. So right here you can see the paralegal well system. So the blue lines are the water lines, but every, like we have the yellow, so is where our well locations are at. So well eight, uh, well four A, well two A, well nine, well four, well seven, well six, and well five A. So with this project. Um, we actually, the, the only wells we had in operation before we started this project was well six with the star, well seven with the star, well two A and well nine. So we only had four wells in operation before this project. Um, well four A is being turned on for the first time. Um, and it's bringing back, pretty much bringing, bringing it back to life. Uh, well eight, well four, and well five A are additional wells too that we're bringing back to life. So we're doubling our well system with this project. Also, you see the orange line, we connected the well four A with well two A with an interconnect. So that we treat both of those wells with, uh, filters at two A. So it's all the filters you see off of Manning. So next slide. So well nine, which is our biggest producer, um, here's a picture of the filters, but right, right now, um, the filters are being flushed and cleaned. Um, the state is gonna come and inspect them next week, so they're gonna check for bacteria, they're gonna check to see if, if it's, uh, the water quality is good. For them to, um, allow us to put in the, the carbon inside of the filters and then start filtering water and putting it to the city. So. Within two weeks, we're going online. It's complete, just waiting the state inspection. So it's, it's, that was the first one to come, uh, uh, online and it's, like I said, it's, that one provides around seventy percent of the city's water. So will be filtered, the majority of the city will be filtered with this well. Next slide. Here's a picture of the flushing we did last week, um, and, and essentially this is out of, out of filters. Next slide. Here's some, uh, coordination testing that we were doing for our water. Um, and this is just a part of the, like the sequences. Uh, to bring something online, you have to pass testing and internal testing and then state testing, and then they'll give you the green light to bring it back online. So next slide. Here's a picture of well nine, and this one is the one at the industrial park, by the way. But this is from the outside, from right here, you can see the, the, um, the filters lined up right here to the right hand side. And that's our, our existing water tank. That's the one that feeds most of the city. So they get filtered through a filter and they get thrown into that water tank. Next slide. And that smaller tank right here, it's, it's our backwash tank, so we can use that to, uh, if we have to wash the filters, so we just turn on the pump and reverse flow it. And throw it into that tank so that we can inspect the, the filters and, and do whatever coordination we need to do. Next slide. Here's a better picture of the filters. They're all installed and complete, ready to go. Next slide. So now we jump to well two A and four A. This is where, and four, uh, well two A and four A are connected and the filters are at Manning. So we call it the centralized treatment plant. Um, well four, we're doing complete reconstruction, um, which is, it's not well four A, it's a different location, but. Um, it's just named four and four A. So they're two different wells. Uh, four A is connected to two A and it's ninety nine percent complete. Uh, we're just waiting for the transformer and it's expected in Ju- June, July. Like I said, these are ones that, um, were not online, that we're bringing back to life, so they're extras for us. Next slide. This is well four, so sometimes it's hard to visualize, like when we say, hey, we're bringing it back from the grave, you know? Um, this is what it looks like when we show up. Uh, this is well four, um, so we, we had to take all the casings down that go down into the well, take all that out, replace it, put new control systems in place, new motors. Uh, new everything, so all of that's happening to well four right now. Well four will be complete, uh, in July. Um, and like I said, that one's being added, it's extra. Next slide. So this is at our, uh, centralized location at two A near Manning, two A and four A, that's where we connected both of them. Next slide. This site is complete, um, two A and four A are complete, it's just waiting, uh, for the, uh, transformer, like I was saying, for a P G and E. Um, and we, again, we expect it in, uh, the transformer to be installed in June, close it off in July. Next slide. So this is, you see a lot more filters here, it's because this is filtering two different wells, like I said, it's centralized, so, um, this is our bigger plant that we have. Uh, everything's been paved, concreted, connected, everything's ready to go, just waiting, like I said, the, the last P G and E, uh, transformer. Next slide. There's another picture, um, right there on, 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 uh, it's next to our lift station off of Milton. Next slide. This is our backwash tank, again, it's the same, serves the same purchase, purpose where we, uh, backwash the water and put it into here, uh, for treatment. Next slide. And, and we also have a utility, we constructed a utility room that houses all our, all our, um, chlorine testing and, and all our, uh, material that we need essentially to run the well, meters, everything. Five A, we also are bringing that one back to life. Um, that, that one hasn't been running for the last twenty years. So, um, the lucky thing about five A is that that one's the one on Zedeker. Um, it has no detectable T C P, so that's actually, doesn't even have to be filtered. So we, uh, all we did was, uh, replace the well and pump and, uh, update the, the communication system, the skater system they call it, and bring it up to speed. Um, yeah, so that one we expect, it's pending P G and E inspection, final inspection, so we're expecting, um, uh, at the end of the month essentially. This one's already ready to go, completed, just missing inspection. Next slide. This is also five way, uh, these are the controls that we installed. Again, this one was, there was nothing there, uh, so the controls and electrical systems. Um, and also back there you see our, our beautiful new generator, so if anything happens, it turns on. And then there's the lights out or electricity goes out, then we have backup for, for, uh, as of now, we have backup for all of our new wells. So, next slide. This is the, this is the flushed out system. Next slide. And you can see our utility room and our generator from here. Um, everything's brand new, like I said, new pipe work, new, new well, new pumps. Next slide. There's a brand new pump. Um, and so, yeah, everything's complete and ready to go. Next slide. Here's our beautiful generator. Next slide. And then well six, um, we got a brand new generator and, and also installed, um, this one actually only needed the communication system, so we installed it. Um, and added the generator, so that's complete and it's operational. Next slide. Well six, um, go back to the map, it's easier to show you, uh, to the, the first slide. Sorry. Uh, so it's, it's off of, um, uh. Manning and Zedeker, but it's inside the parking lot. Yes, the health center, inside the parking lot. So it's not on the street, but, but yeah. Okay, so there's well six, there's a new operating system, new meters. Next slide. Well eight, this one is on, um, Toolumee, uh, no, sorry, foothill, um, near the school, near the high school out there, it's near. Martinez, there you go. Yes, that's right, Martinez. So, um, again, this one was down for more than twenty years, wasn't functioning, we brought it back to life. Um, we installed a new generator, uh, it's pretty much complete, um, it's just waiting the P G and E inspection. Again, they, they schedule you out months in advance sometimes and, and you don't have control over that, but we are pretty much ninety nine percent complete. Next slide. This is a previous from a while ago, but I just, that was a good area, so you can kind of see. So the six filters we installed, the backwash tank, the brand new well on the bottom right hand side. Uh, the generator, the big square white thing, um, and the, go ahead to the next slide. I'll show you the, um, this is how it looks like from the outside. Everything's complete and placed, built out. We got new lighting, we got new asphalt. Yeah, next slide. New, new, uh, new controls, new coordination system. Next slide, brand new well, uh, brand new pump. Uh, there's, here's a picture of the backside showing the, the filters and, and the alleyway as well. Go ahead to the next slide. Oh, that's it? Okay, I was trying to go fast. But yeah, any questions?
On well A, before, it was only the little strip that's on the backside between the school and Martinez, I mean, it's going the house.
Yeah, there was a, the fence there right there and we, we, all, that's the only thing we had to have access for the well.
It was only, it was only one little strip and now it's that whole.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, it's a lot that's been built, um, and sometimes, you know, pictures say, tell a thousand words.
I mean, it's all the gates, is that the little, the little roadway between that we were having a lot of problems where they were like throwing trash or.
Yeah. Yeah, we put a gate so we can access the, the treatment center from, from there, the treatment plant from, from, from that street. Yeah, it's all cleaned up. And it's easier to maintain now too.
Here to, uh, know that all this got funded back when, uh, in two thousand and sixteen with our settlement. Then the funding from T J Cox from the federal government when he gave us funding for, we actually took pictures there, it was Trino myself and. I know it was, I think Noe and, and Jose at the time, when they gave us the funding for these projects, because all those wells that you're talking about, yeah, they are, they were offline.
Yeah.
And the one from, uh, Zedeker, they would always tell us that's the cleanest one, but it's not working, so finally with all these funds that we were able to receive. Here's the, the end result. And I know that people keep saying like, well, what's happening? How come you, you know, people want to see. The progress, but sometimes you won't be able to see this because it's not where it's gonna be visible, like a building. You know, you'll see ta- uh, tanks out there, but nobody, everybody thinks, even I was one of the thing, like where are they gonna move them?
Yeah.
But they were all in that one centralized location and you had them near the other well, so I'm glad that you're doing this presentation, cause it's always been coming up.
Yeah.
You know, from the last council even now, cause they would always bring up, well, when are they gonna put the filtration system in? And it's like, it's not an overnight thing. It does take some time, so finally, you know, all these years since two thousand and sixteen till now, to finally get it done, and I'm glad that all these fundings did come in. To actually make it happen.
Yeah.
And thank you for the hard work that you, and I know Alfonso was the one that was working, yeah.
Also and with, with Public Works too even, it's been a lot of people working on this project.
Yeah, cause it, and the contractors that we had for, that to install all these things, because it, it does require a lot of, um. Team effort and a lot of other companies to come and put it together, cause it's a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of, uh, yeah, inside those tanks, I think each tank has over a hundred pieces of pipe, uh, to move water around, so, and each one has to be assembled by hand, so they're all. Bolted together, tiny little pieces, some of them.
So are you gonna be notifying them by mail to let them know that the system is up and running? You know how we notify them that there's contaminants in the water? So I think it would be a good idea to also notify them that once it's up and running, all of them, to notify the public with our, uh, mailers that we do for our utility bill. Uh, letting them know that the filtration system is up and running and they're actually getting clean water now.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because that's one thing that, it's important to make sure that they know.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Javier, well, that's good that you're doing this, that's true, because remember when I went with you to all the wells?
Yeah.
I took pictures and I put it out there and I explained to the people, so quite a bit of people probably know already.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's you guys. We can say it like the rest of the comp- uh, community, it's you guys that actually did the hard work and, um, that's who deserves the credit. So thank you, thank you for everything you do. And, and a lot of these projects, um, I don't know if you're gonna be bringing anything up on the other projects that you're working on for the next agenda?
Yeah, I wanna, I can.
Cause I think I wanted you to do it, but we forgot to put them on the, the last time. I don't know.
Uh, nobody's questioning who's doing the job, so you're good, Javier.
Is there any other?
Okay.
No, just that, just to answer.
I, I, yeah, I also want to thank you because I know we have fundings, because when I first started, we did, um, talk about the, the. Can I, can I, can I finish, please? Excuse me, I, I, can I please finish?
Yeah, you will.
Thank you, thank you.
I still run the meeting, and what I'm saying is that it comes in twenty three.
But I have the floor right now, mayor, please, thank you.
Go ahead and finish, now correct it.
Anyway, thank you Javier, cause I know a lot of the funding for this project, um, you went out and you guys.
No, they didn't go out.
Got the grants to finish off the funding, cause I know when we, I first started, the fundings that we had were not enough to finish the whole project.
Right, they, yeah.
It was not enough to finish the whole.
Let me, because you're misleading the public already. There was no grant, the, the funding, because you're giving them false information.
Okay, Javier, who did the funding, the rest of the funding for this project?
Water board gave us the funding.
I'm not saying they did not, I'm not saying they did not, because we did have funding from different sources.
Which is a settlement.
Your funding that, that you brought to the, to this project made a big difference, and I just want to say thank you so much. For everybody, you, your crew, everybody that had their hands on this, thank you so much for all of that hard work.
He brought it, okay? When we had this.
Sorry Javier.
When we first came in.
Credit for what you do.
And the first, and the first.
Nobody's telling you, Javier.
Mayor was here, they had filed a lawsuit, that's how it went down. The last mayor that was sitting here, they all, the council then. Filed a lawsuit against the chemicals that were in the ground. We won our settlement. Then once we won that settlement, our obligation was to do the filtration system. Then we went out and we applied for a federal funding and T J Cox was from the federal government that also allocated funds for this project. The last funding that actually paid for the whole, uh, uh, project was the state water board. That's the one that gave us, what, the eleven million, I believe it was, for the entire project. That's why I wanted to make sure that that, it was explained. That, that twenty sixteen, they got the settlement, then they got the funding from the federal government, from T J Cox. And then the state water board gave us the remaining amount, so we can actually finish this project. That's all I was trying to say.
Yeah, the, um, I only added the, cause we only had about nine.
Nine.
And, and the, the.
From the, from the lawsuit was nine million?
The, so we had the lawsuit and then we had nine, uh, another nine for, for the project, but, um, we needed sixteen, so the rest we, we.
It came from the state water board, and that is when you could make those, when you have those connections with state legislators, they support these fundings. People don't understand that, it's not you just apply, I, I don't want us to keep saying this, because it has been saying, people be saying, oh, well, you can apply for a grant. You can apply for a grant for this, you can apply for a grant for that. That's not how it works. If there is no grant for it, how are you gonna apply for it?
That's common sense.
Funding is available, that's why you need to learn the system.
Sense.
Well, you are, you're the one that says about grants.
Sense.
Then you don't have any.
Okay, go ahead.
They just come and give it to us, no, you have to apply for it.
Thank you for that.
Well, we're not done yet, we're not done yet. Javier, hold on a second.
Uh, do the public comments.
Megan, she doesn't let us ask questions, she shuts it up when she's done.
He did his presentation, pasen, por favor, pasen.
She talked all she wanted and cut Janie, but we can't talk.
Yeah, it's like, it's, it's just.
Put that down.
Who did what, if, that's all you guys argue about, wanting to show who did what. Go ahead, por favor.
Alma didn't do nothing, it was Javier.
Pensé que yo, pensé que yo nada más estaba tóxica, pero ya miré que no. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Brenda Rojas y pues estoy aquí con Brenda Rojas. Estoy aquí con el motivo de que pues no sé cómo pueda trabajar pues aquí el chief con los policías que están. En, en, en ayunas, en ayunas específicamente, verdad? Porque a mí en un personal como mamá sí me gustaría como que tuvieran más, o usted mayor que nos ayudara de que los, los policías que están adentro de las escuelas. Tuvieran como más el tacto más sensible para que se comuniquen con los niños. Porque pues el policía francamente pues está como amenazando a uno como papá, de que no quiere ni actúan como. Enojados, amenazantes, y eso como que pues para intimidar a uno pues. enojados, amenazantes, y eso como que pues pa intimidar a uno pues no se vale. Porque apenas tuve yo como, digamos, un problema en la Junia, la verdad, de que pues el policía se me fue encima, incluso me echó el CPS sin ningún motivo, porque él pensó, no preguntó ni investigó, el primero actuó, después investigó. Digo, yo pues estoy limpia, mis hijos están limpios, yo siempre como se los he dicho en las escuelas, por mis hijos y como voy a aventar al policía que se murió, verdad, al señor Rodríguez que en paz de cáncer. Él me dijo, si tú no peleas por tus hijos, nadie lo va a hacer. Y yo me quedo con lo que él me dijo, ¿por qué? Porque las escuelas son corruptas, y más en la Junia. Que el director de la escuela quiere intimidar a los niños para que él se salga con su voluntad, y digo, pues si los policías también están trabajando para la escuela, creo que tienen que tener primero, primero, respeto con los niños, para que los niños se acerquen a ellos, y no actuar impulsivamente.
Quieres que tengamos, uh, un momento para que traducen eso, porque cuando están So, um, the, were you, did you, are you still informed, are you still trying to figure out what's going on? Okay, so, what she's saying that I asked, fuisteis a la escuela, y este, uno de los oficiales allí, este, en vez de investigar, no
Prácticamente no fui a la escuela, yo estaba, digamos, encuerada en la casa, verdad, a punto de, de meterme a bañar, porque pues estaba haciéndole comida a los niños, pues me vuelvo loca.
El, el momento, esta, había un video en, en Facebook que llegó una, un policía
Ese fue otro, y digamos con el mismo policía, de que el policía pues ya ha tenido quejas, de que pues actúa como impulsivamente, verdad? Pero eso fue la, fue la primera vez, digamos, que no fue conmigo sino con, con mi hijo, si me entiende.
Había un video de la situación que usted está hablando?
No, no fue, no, no, ese no fue video, esa fue del, del video que están hablando fue de anterior, de que fue el problema con el niño, si me entiende. Y como pues el policía, digamos, que tocó inapropiadamente a la niña, y pues a mi muchacho no le gustó, y yo seguí, digamos, el protocolo de la escuela. Yo traje la carta y todo eso, y pues el policía actuó a su, a órdenes del director.
Para explicarle a él qué fue la situación que ocurrió ese día.
Recientemente, okay, conmigo, pues yo como dije, verdad, estaba en la casa pues a punto de meterme a bañar, porque iba a levantar a mi niño, estaba haciéndole comida, pues pa tenerles todo listo cuando llegaran. Me habló el policía amenazándome, amenazándome, si, si no me, si no hablas conmigo, no, me dijo, dice, pues ya le hablé al CPS y van a venir a levantar a la niña, y No, que el CPS iba a levantar a la niña para que se la llevara. Okay, yo me quedé, le digo, ¿por qué? Y él dijo que, ¿por qué? Que se está amen, se estaba usando en la casa de la niña, y pues yo me quedé, digo, pues Yo me quedé, digo, pues, ¿de qué me perdí yo?, si me entiende.
Qué pasó, no sé.
Sí, o sea, me quedé, qué pasó. Pero ya después de que me amenazó con el CPS, el policía ahora sí me dijo, ¿quieres hablar conmigo? Le digo, no voy a hablar contigo, al único que le tengo que dar explicación es al CPS, tú ya actuaste a tu manera, o por órdenes del director, o como, como haya sido. Pero conmigo, digamos, el policía fue grosero, cuando se comunicó con mi esposo también, o sea, con mi esposo ya no fue como más relajado el policía, pero a mí sí me quiso intimidar el policía. Pero le dije, okay, ¿cómo quieres que yo hable contigo? Si ya me estás, o sea, ya actuaste sin investigar y sin preguntarme a mí qué, qué había pasado en la casa. Así es que yo, por lo cual ahorita, al único que le tengo que dar explicación es al CPS, no a ti.
Okay, y este, has llenado una queja aquí o en la policía sobre el
La, pues la, prácticamente la he va a llenar, pero pues cuando fui, no había nadie en, cuando pasó eso, no había nadie en, en la policía, que no tenían las hojas de complace. Y pues nunca tienen nada.
Era las horas ya pasadas de las cinco?
No, porque pues ese tiempo se dio en el transcurso, digamos, como a la, a la una y media, y yo pues, yo como dije, pues que si el CPS viene, yo me fui a la oficina del, de policía, y pues, de ahí pues me tuvieron todo un, un rato hasta que pues me hablaron del CPS y yo tuve que venir a la, a la Junia. Pero pues en transcurso de ese tiempo, que no había secretaria, no había policía, no había hojas de complace, y ni nada.
¿Qué día fue? Si tiene la fecha y para que él vaya a ver, um, quién trabajó ese día.
No, no.
Excuse me, mayor, I, I, this is important, I understand. But perhaps the, the chief, acting city manager can assist her, um, and, and follow up?
I was gonna give her that directive anyways, but, but I think it's important for us to know what's going on up here too. Uh, only because, um, I did see a video on a different occasion of what happened. I don't know what happened, I just saw it, I'm sure chief took care of it.
Son cosas diferentes, pues el video obviamente lo miraron ustedes, verdad, pero digamos que es el mismo. Yo respeto a los policías, pues si ellos están en su derecho de hacer cualquier cosa, yo, yo entiendo. Pero digamos ahora sí, pues siempre he peleado cómo actúa el director de la Junia, y nada más eso me gustaría, como que trabajaran como para que
Hay dos cosas que puedes hacer, okay? Primera es de venir a hablar con Berta y con el, el jefe del policía, aquí. Si quieres mañana, bueno, bueno, mañana, y la segunda es de que hablar con el, ah, con la, allá en la escuela.
No hacen caso.
Has ido con el, con, uh, doctor Iníguis también?
No hacen caso, no, 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 no tenemos superintendente, honestamente pues no hay.
Y, y, pero sí ha hablado con él, no más para que esté documentado también.
Nunca tiene cita, eh, con el único que uno puede hablar es con el señor Alvarado.
Lo que puedo hacer es yo voy a hablar con él y este, decirle que yo tengo su número de teléfono también.
Sí, él, él lo, él lo único
Voy a hacer, voy a llamarle a él, a que tengas una cita con él y le expliques lo que pasó. Porque él también necesita, um, saber de lo que está pasando. Porque hay veces, como dicen, hay dos, dos lados del, de la historia, verdad? Así que tienes que, tienes que enfrentarte con él y decirle de lo que le pasa a usted y
Pero pues, eh, el problema de que, de que como era, nosotros, bueno, yo como mamá digo pues, mm, a la hora que quieran puede ir a mi casa, a mí me pueden investigar al derecho, al revés, o sea, no, no tengo nada, verdad? Y con mis hijos mucho menos, a mis hijos primero me matan a mí antes de, de ponerle un dedo encima a ellos. Pero el punto es de que pues, en escuela ya no nos hacen caso, o sea, hacen su voluntad ellos. Y pues el policía también ataca a los niños, con quién se va, con quién se van a acercar a los niños, o sea, no tienen con quién recurrir los niños.
Ya no, a, así que trate eso primero, y también voy a decirle que tenga una cita con usted, el de la escuela. Ah, trate todos modos.
Pues a ver si le hace caso, porque pues
Pero así ya está documentado que sí trató, hizo lo posible usted de hacer algo, okay? Y así no hacen caso, es otra cosa, pero usted sí hizo algo, okay? Y así, y, y lo puede reportar y tienes documentado de que usted hizo lo que pudo ser.
Sí, porque incluso de ese, pues no tengo la fecha exacta, verdad, pero incluso de ese, de ese incidente de que me echó el policía, el CPS, pues yo le dije al policía también de, de un reporte que había dicho la niña en contra del director, pero hasta ahorita igual el policía quedó de comunicarse con mi esposo y hasta la, hasta, hasta el día de hoy, brilla por su ausencia.
Okay, yo le voy, le avisamos a él y así para, yo te aviso de la fecha.
Okay, gracias.
La otra, cuando le pasa eso, si tiene que ver algo con la policía, ve con el jefe, todo el tiempo, no con ella. Con el jefe primero y luego con ella.
I know her, I have her number.
Así si quieres, okay?
Gracias.
Okay.
You need to be, you need to stop telling people that they can't communicate, if they want to communicate with me, Kathy, I don't tell people not to contact you. So you have no right to tell anybody in my community not to contact me.
In your community, I let them know who they're supposed to do, report to protocol. Chief, Berta, and if we get our city manager, that's the way it is.
No, I'm not an employee.
You cost too, you cost, you cost me money, too much money to people already.
Siempre si quieres comunicarte conmigo, tú sabes que puedes, ya tienes mi número de teléfono, si, si quieres en el futuro, no, no, no es que te Yo no trabajo por el ch, el jefe, no trabajo por ellos. Ellos, si quieres contratarte también con los de aquí, del concilio, con cualquier persona aquí, tú tienes ese derecho, okay? Es lo que quiero que sepas, que no tienes que simplemente nomás comunicarte con el jefe. Usted tiene el derecho de hablar con cualquiera de nosotros acá arriba, okay? Así que yo le aviso, gracias. Okay, then, thank you, uh, another comment?
Buenas tardes, miren, nosotros estamos aquí no para que ustedes discutan, sino para que trabajen en el equipo y queremos trabajar como comunidad, con equipo, con ustedes. Yo ya puse un complace con el señor chief, vine con Berta y platiqué, pero sí también estoy apoyando a una madre y apoyo a los estudiantes de esta misma comunidad, que nos gustaría que hablaran con la policía, fueran un poquito más sensibles con nuestros hijos, con nosotros de personal, porque al final de cuentas, ellos están aquí para nosotros y nosotros para ellos, porque ellos reciben un sueldo por lo que nosotros pagamos impuestos, trabajan, diremos, para nosotros, y nosotros trabajamos para ellos y ellos para nosotros. Entonces nosotros aquí simplemente estamos, no para pelear ni discutir, simplemente para tener una comunidad mejor. Porque si hay estos proyectos en conflictos con ustedes, perdón, no llegamos a ningún lugar. Me gustaría que el chief hablara, usted y hablara con el personal de la policía y fueran un poquito más sensibles con la comunidad, más que nada con nuestros niños. Porque por eso hay mucho conflicto, por el hecho es de que qué? De que abusan de un uniforme, abusan de una bacha, y no deben de abusar, porque al final de cuentas somos una comunidad.
Sí, está correcto, lo que está diciendo, por eso el, el, el jefe sí va a comunicarse con usted así, pa que tenga algo documentado. Y si en el futuro al, no hay cambio y ve que no ha, no ha respondado el, al oficial, regrese con nosotros otra vez, okay?
Y aparte, señor chief, a lo que hablamos con, con usted, a mí me gustaría saber cómo ir a agarrar el video que le hice el comentario, porque yo ya lo investigué, ya me dieron una respuesta, pero yo quiero tener ese video en mi propiedad. Dígame cómo hacerlo, porque en el futuro que pase esto, yo quiero tener pruebas.
De cuál video, por favor?
Es que hubo una citación, un poquito más, pero no quiero ponerlo aquí porque no quiero ponerlo aquí porque hay grabaciones y eso me afectaría a mí como persona.
Me pregunta va a ser si era de un video que grabó el oficial.
No, personal.
Okay, está bien. Si quieres también venir con
No, pero está bien, yo ya hablé con él, verdad, pero sí quería esta mesa venir a hacérselo a saber a ustedes como comunidad que tienen que hablar con sus oficiales, porque abusan de un uniforme y abusan de su bacha contra la comunidad y todo, gracias.
Disculpa señora, ¿cómo te llamas?
Rosamora.
En nombre de Rosamora.
Gracias. Okay, cualquier otra persona, sí, por favor.
Mi nombre es Paulino Blanco García y necesito que escuchen un poquito algo. Yo quiero ser alcalde en el futuro de aquí también, pero voy a correr a pendiente, tenemos eso, ahora, algo importante. Tenemos una comunidad de un poquito confusa, muchas cosas, pero muy agresivos algunos, ¿verdad? Eh, tanto dentro de la comunidad donde estamos ahorita, me cuento, porque también yo participo en lo que estas personas dicen, o sea, que no es matar a nuestros hijos. Y ahorita estoy pasando un momento así, pero no es matando el, del gobierno, que voy a mentir, ¿entienden? Pero eso es un asunto de niños en la escuela, lo estamos tratando bien en mi casa, pero sí mira lo que dice la señora, y he sabido, y observo los videos que suben los niños, ellos me los ponen, ahora. Yo no hago eso hoy. Ah, también unas personas en la milto en el futuro necesitamos unos, unos topes, porque hay muchos niños, me mandan pedir ahora, pero eso lo quiero arreglar después, ahora. Lo que necesito es que escuchen que tuvimos una llamada del nueve once desde allá de la Zedeker, casi la Dinuba, el día veintisiete y como ante diez y pin, puntos, ahora. Las personas que necesitamos ir, mandar o hacer llamar al gobierno que pueda hacerlo, porque, eh, sé que dentro de nuestro, de nuestra comunidad no tenemos ciertas libertades para obtener ciertas cosas. Pero todas las balas que, por el cual llamaron ahí al policía el nueve once en ese día, ahí tienen que estar tiradas a toda la casa, a mí fue el que me dispararon esa vez. Yo escuché las balas cerca a mí. Y también necesito que pues nos ayuden a que nosotros como ciudadanos, al menos yo, pueda ir a recogerlas, porque hablé con un oficial ayer, porque yo el día veintiocho tenía que presentarme a la corte contra las personas que hace unos días me sacaron una pistola en septiembre, y pues no se habían presentado a la corte, se presentaron otros familiares, alegando quién sabe qué cosas, qué, qué cosas, pero ahora, ahí, el punto es que necesitamos, que sean más responsables los oficiales en muchos temas, en muchos. Y creo que en ese en especial yo sí lo necesito que me ayuden en esto. Yo sé que ahí están los cascajos, porque yo sé desde qué distancia dispararon, porque yo acababa de llegar allí a llevar una forma con muchacho que está trabajando para nosotros, porque yo contrato gente para piscar naranjas y limón, y ese dentro él, pero me dio la, la forma, ¿verdad? Entonces no me dio la dirección y yo fui pa eso, cuando me desperté en la noche así de como la nueve algo, pero ya como, con, casi cuando yo llegué, un poquito después, fue cuando se hicieron los disparos, ta, 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 pero pues pasaron zumbando. Entonces a mí se me hizo raro que llegaron los policías, porque pensaba que eran los de la casa, ¿entiende? Pero no, los de la casa fueron los que marcaron, ahora, yo le expliqué a ella el policía cómo está todo, cómo llegaron todo, porque yo me salí cuando llegaron los policías de donde estaba en la casita de esa señora, del perdón, del señor. Y creo que lo bueno fue que él tiene como un pozo adentro, y ahí estábamos sentados nosotros así de lado hablando, mientras él escribía eso en un papel con pintura roja, se oyó tanta, se zumaban. Pero después, se me hizo curioso que nos quebraron los vidrios de los carros, ya lo han hecho antes, pero todo eso pasó ahora, lo único urgente es que nos den todo el auxilio pa ir a recoger los cascajos, que no hagan
So, ¿cuál es la queja porque ya, ya pasamos tres minutos?
No, tenemos un buen orden de los policías, eso es todo.
Entonces le voy a avisar al, al jefe también aquí.
Gracias, con permiso.
Now we can move on to the next item, uh, next item is consent calendar, is there any item in the consent calendar that any of you would like to pull? Any from the public? Okay. So do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Who was the second? Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, yes, okay. All right, let's move on to regular business, and that is the consideration necessary action. Resolución number twenty-five dash thirty-four designation of the authorized signature, okay, this is for the bank, right? So, okay, did you put it on here? Okay, in the, in the fut, in the future, when, when, when we do that in the, in the, on the agendas, I'm not saying put her name, but the title, because again, the minutes won't, when we research something or when it was approved, you can't find it. I mean, we talked about that before, and I asked chief to let you know, but I guess it didn't still get on there, but, um, yeah, just to put the title when, when we're adding Yeah, or taking someone off. No, and that's fine, but you still need it on the agenda, because you gotta search it, it's gotta be agendaized no matter what, okay? Thank you. All right, go ahead, chief. Oh, who's gonna present? So, that's it? That's it?
It's on the resolution.
I know, but you still gotta present it for the public, we have it, but the public does not.
Yes, uh, mayor council, members of the public, excuse us, but, uh, before you, it's a, it's a recommendation uh, to add our finance director as a designate authorizing her to sign the checks, uh, for the city, so, uh, staff recommends.
My question for that is going to be, when we sign, is it going to be only staff signing? Or is it, because I mentioned this before, where you have one elected and a staff member? So is that, is that, because before I remember we had staff only signing, so it's no longer going to be that, right?
It's
I think if that's where it should have been also specific on the resolution, but i- if it's like that maybe in the future, Megan, you think that we could add that on there for when we add?
As it is and just, um, amend that, adding that, it would be
That must be
Member and one staff member.
Yeah, because I, I, I really feel more
Actually, it's on there, we prefer combination of one elected official and one staff member when available.
Yeah, but you want to have it all the time, because that's what they got away with the last
Well, but that, that's the combination that it's on here, so
I just think that it should just be an elected and a staff member. Even, even though if they're not avail, because they'll, it's been used before. That's why, we cannot do it, but I'm just saying because it was used before.
Well, the only question I had was because the last time this came up, before we had our finance director, we had somebody else.
Because he's not an elected.
And you mentioned that it's not good to have a finance director who's in charge be on the signing and stuff like that, so I just don't know.
The reason why, and I didn't want to bring it up again the last time, because when I talked to Michael, the attorney, that person's not an employee. The person does not sit on this council.
No, it's not that time, it was another time that we tried putting someone who was in charge or in the finance, and it was somebody who's running.
That's why when you had two staff members signing, that is why I'm saying one elected and one staff member.
Yeah, but that's not what we're talking about, I'm talking about that you said that it's not good to have.
Say that, I'm trying to clear, okay, now you're putting words in my mouth. What I'm saying and what I'm trying to clarify today, when the last city manager was here, we had two staff members. Nobody from the council was signing, I didn't care who it was, that it should be always an elected and but you're not letting me finish, an elected and a staff member. It didn't matter whether it was a finance director or deputy city clerk, assistant city manager, or if it was at that time a city, assistant city manager, so whatever it was. My complaint back then was, is that it was two staff members signing all checks, no elected was signing. So therefore, if you get a check, we're not going to see it.
Nobody's disagreeing with you, mayor.
So why are you even arguing about what I said, I'm telling you that's what I said.
I think it was more about they're in finance and normally that I, my knowledge the ones preparing the checks and all that stuff. Those who are preparing it shouldn't be signers, which is someone prior who was working on that stuff. Now she's overseeing, so she should be a signer, so I think it was the last time who was who was temporarily taken over. They were trying to, they were trying to add that person, but it's fine, I mean, that's the thing.
Who they were trying to add, but I'm just saying, and a director does not process the checks, her staff.
I know, that's what I'm saying, that's why she should be.
Even the last finance director was the same thing.
May I ask for clarification, because it seems to me that what you're looking for legally is that you don't want a preferred combination of one elected and one staff, you want a required.
Yes, thank you.
So let's delete the word preferred and change it to required.
Combination.
Thank you.
And we can just, we can actually cross it out and signature it or prepare a new one and have you sign it. But your motion needs to reflect that, if that's alright.
I'd like to motion to approve the resolution.
Veinte veinte cinco treinta y cuatro.
Veinte veinte cinco treinta y cuatro, with the correction of remove preferred and add required combination of one elected official and one staff member when available. Well, it would have been a staff member, remove when available.
Yes, thank you.
And also in the second, where it says any two of the authorized signatures shall be required, etc. And I would also add one elected official and one staff members required to sign or something along those lines.
Yes.
On your second requirement, under the, here, and we can, I can work with Bertha to finalize it if you wish.
Thank you, yes. I think it's just better. Part of my motion is for Megan to work with Bertha regarding the number two, I am on the resolution.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for fixing it, alright, so Sabrina, motion, Diggle's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, ok. Thank you Megan for that, and now we have chief, we're going to start that way.
Yes, I just want to, once again, thank all our staff for working hard. You know, we did, we did a lot to facilitate and collaborate with Roundup, really successful event. Glad to see all the people out there that came out, had a good time, I want to thank all our assisting allied agencies for the mutual aid. Very much appreciated, and it's just an enormous partnership and value. But other than that, yes, just want to thank all the staff for all the hard work they do.
Okay, I would also like to thank all the members of the Parlior Roundup Committee for putting such a great event. Thank you to their sponsors, vendors and volunteers. Without them, this event would not be possible, they have a lot of things that come out to the community. Also, a big thank you to our police department, our partnering police agencies that help in making this event safe. I was able to thank them in person, which was really great to see these officers from other communities to come and help in our cities. Great job chief, with everybody that was out there. Javier, I had a resident that reached out to me about the needs of restrooms at Big Tree Park. He mentioned if we could seek outsourced source of funding for the restrooms. I did talk to him, I did mention that during the ribbon cutting, it was brought up about the restrooms. Apparently, there was not enough funding to put the restrooms, so I did mention that we did talk about it and maybe we can start looking into that again and trying to get restrooms up there. Apparently, some of the kids don't have nowhere to go, so they kind of try to hide behind some of the trees and stuff out there and it's not safe. It's not sanitized, sanitary, we can look into that, would be great. Also, I wanted to thank chief, our animal control officers, for starting our students from the high school or animal shelter, there I saw the notice that they're out there, they're volunteering. Chief, can you explain a little bit of how, because I know there's a lot of residents that are saying they want to volunteer and they've been saying we want to volunteer, how can we do this? Can you explain a little bit of the steps that they would need to take to become volunteers and help out at our shelter?
Sure, sure, so we do have a volunteer program, there's some simple paperwork that has to be filled out. We do a quick check process on that and we schedule, that is going to be scheduled in pretty much seven days a week. Actually, six days a week, that we, right now, currently, we're working with the NJ from the high school, they're doing a fantastic job. We got about six students out there that come out randomly throughout the day and assist with just helping out maintenance with the pound, recreation, getting the animals out and getting them some exercise, feeding them as well, and that socialization really helps reduce anxiety for the animals out there. But yes, if anybody wants to volunteer, swing by the police department, we do have applications on file. And it's a pretty quick process, but we appreciate all the help and yes, thank you.
Thank you chief, and thank you everybody, have a good night.
I just wanted to thank the Roundup Committee for putting on this event each year, it takes a lot of work. We did have a little damper on Saturday as it rained, but they still, it still went through. We had a little parade, some of the schools still went out there and took their floats. It was nice, and there was still some people out there on Main Street, well, I call it Main Street, on Fresno Street. In downtown Main Street, and people were out there still supporting, so it was really nice to see that. People didn't start getting out there to the park till about maybe four, four thirty, it was cold. And those of you who came out in the cold, thank you vendors for sticking it out through that Saturday afternoon rain. But again, it was a nice event, thank you to the other agencies that participated in getting this going. Our police staff and other agencies, our city staff who are out there helping out. Again, it doesn't, it's not just one committee or, you know, ten people doing it. It takes a lot of people to put on a big event like this for multiple days, but again, thank you. And I just wanted to say I saw pictures of our egg hunt. I wasn't able to make it, but I know the kids had a good time. Actually, I did show up at the end, I'm trying to think, I know I did, sorry mayor, it was there. I did the raffle stuff with Kathy and mayor was there before. So again, it was good to see everybody out there and I'm glad I made it, I didn't think I made it, I had to look at the calendar. Again, I was pretty busy that day, but again, I just thank the city staff and the police department who put that on. I think that's it for me, thank you.
I just want to just thank all the staff here at the city, thank you Javier for everything that you've done, especially with the TCP project. It was a long time coming, obviously, it doesn't happen overnight, but also I want to thank the Roundup Committee, Police Department surrounding agencies, and everyone who had a hand in it, it was a good event, unfortunately, I only got to go one day. But we made that day happen and I got to dance with my kids, which is always fun, they don't let me get off the dance floor and I love that, so. Again, just thank you to everyone, the community, please reach out to us whenever you want, that's what we're here for, we work for you guys, so have a good one.
I wasn't able to make it to the Roundup because I was not feeling good, so I really stayed home, I was really, really ill, so sorry, it's the first time I missed it, but hopefully, there's still another one, I'll be there. And I also want to thank Javier, I mean, I got some messages and phone calls saying about the ten million dollar grant, they asked me who did it, what happened, I told them Javier did the footwork, he wrote the grant. He's the one bringing in the ten million dollars, so I want to thank you Javier, and I hope I clarified it to them correctly. You're the one that wrote the grant and did all that, right? Okay, so about the water filters, man, that's exciting, that really is, that's really good. And I just want to tell everybody, we'll be out of here soon and have a great evening.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you Javier, yeah, she's right, you do a lot of the work, but it also requires a lot of the other work from other agencies that have to collaborate with this happening, anyone that knows government knows that that's how it works. It's not a grant that you just apply, and I want to make sure that I reiterate that, because I get that a lot from a lot of the community members. Well, why can you apply for this grant, why can you apply for that grant? There's not just a grants for all, like for whatever, you know? So as far as the complaint that, about this Big Tree Park, that grant was an urban, urban green grant, which does, you cannot put a restroom for that grant, because it's all just plants, greenery, so you cannot put a restroom in that in that park, because it doesn't qualify under that. So if we would have done that, we would have been not in compliance and we would have to pay whatever we spent for that that, for that restroom. With that being said, again, there is not grants that are all available for whatever subject you want to look into to make sure that you can qualify for it. Grants come and go, they do put, the state can put grants available for certain things, and if it comes up online, you'll see the available grants that are available for the cities, municipalities to apply for, and then that's when our staff applies for them. And they support it with providing the information from the city, because it's a competitive grant. And when it's competitive, you have to make sure that you stand out from the rest, and what helps when you stand out from the rest is when you lobby, and you lobby for your city, that's when the relationships come in with the mayors that meet with the electeds in Sacramento, that we constantly have every year. We go to Sacramento for certain subjects like this, or for also for the Central Valley, which is another board that I'm part of. The other one that I just came back and I just wanted to let everyone know, I am very tired, but I'm here. I just got in this morning, I woke up at three o'clock in the morning in DC, which is a big different time change. So there was a lot going on, we worked on a lot of things at the One Voice, which is for Fresno Council of Governments. Nobody in the City of Parlior paid for my expense, so that way, everybody knows that what I did there was all because of the staff of the Fresno Council and the board from the Fresno Council of Governments. They are the ones that actually provided the funds for my trip to work on items that we worked on when we were in DC. Which is, one of them was for the Fresno Yosemite International Airport. Right now, all the colleagues that were there from the entire Fresno County, you had Kalinga Fowler, Sanger, Orange Cove, attending, myself there, attending these meetings to advocate, to lobby for these funds. You don't just get them because you apply for a grant, it doesn't work that way. So we lobbied for funding to help seven million for the east terminal expansion at the airport. Funding to help with the for, for the runway and construction at the airport. Shaw and Avenue ninety nine route interchange to modernize it, because there's a lot of congestion there and there's been a lot of accidents in there, casualties. So our goal was to advocate for those funds for our elected, our federal elected congress and senators that are there to support these projects so that they can get funded, so that's how we do that. And then I spoke on the actual Parlior Educational Trail, that we had support, letters of support from Reedley. We had letters of support from the county for this actual project. We went and met with Jim Costa, which is always helping us all the time, I can tell you, he's always providing and providing for our police department, just like Melissa Hurtado. We met with Adam Schiff, we met with Fong, with Fong, Congressman Fong. We met with Padilla, we met with all the electeds that can make these changes and can make sure we get these fundings. That is what helps Parlior and all the cities in Fresno get the funding. So we worked on the Manning pedestrian crosswalk that you put together, I'm not going to say I did it, because I didn't. You're doing your job as an engineer, providing the material that is needed to paint the picture for our electeds up there so they can see the importance of why we're advocating for these projects to get funded. And one of them was for Manning, Manning needs a pedestrian crosswalk. And that's a stoplight where the pedestrian will go there and press the button and when the lights go on, for them to stop, they can cross and go to the shopping center, so that's one of them, that's a request for one million for that project. The other one that we're working on is eleven point eight million for the City of Parlior for the Educational Trail. And that is a connectivity from Reedley to, from Parlior to Reedley and Reedley to Parlior. So that way, if you have students that don't have any means to get to the college, they have that safe route. It's a trail that Javier worked on to make sure that there was a trail that separates the pedestrian from the traffic on Manning, because we have thirty thousand commuters that go through there a day. So that is a very heavy traffic flow there and very dangerous when there is no trail, no pathway. So that is one of the things that we worked on, which even transportation, Department of Transportation was actually impressed with that too. They said that they want to make sure they fund projects like this that are going to be for safety purposes, like the stoplight for the pedestrians and the trail for Parlior to Reedley, which will help people get to, if they need to go to the DMV, there's a pathway that they can go through that's going to be safe. Milton Road, we've had a lot of accidents, people casualties there too. That was a white, a request for us was for widening the road, and it was a four point seven mile radius that we were asking for them to help, you know, fund that. You know, they have other funding sources, but the federal can actually provide more funding to actually complete the project. So that was one of the things that was done while I was out there. The other thing is, unfortunately, we were not able to meet with the the Central Valley Honor Flight that goes out there every year. We wanted to meet with them, we did send them a little message thanking them, you know, for their service, you know, we appreciate, you know, them being, you know, that they were in the force and they did, you know, dedicate their lives to protecting and also giving us a freedom of speech or whatever it is for our freedoms. So we did do a little message for them, because we didn't get to actually say thank you to them directly when they were out there and we were out there too. But we did send them a message, I think it's important to always remember that our veterans mean a lot to us, that they're not forgotten and that they do matter, and that, you know, whether we're in a small community or in a large city or in the senate or in congress or an assembly member, our voices still matter and we still can make that difference for them. So that's all I wanted to say, one of the things that I did want to bring up, chief, and mainly Myra. So I know that Paul Ditto was trying to get a hold of you guys, I know that people get busy. He didn't complain, he was just saying that it was hard to get a hold of Parlior and then another city, I'm not going to say the other city, but they were hard to get a hold. So I don't know if there's a better way, I don't know if it's our system on the phone or what is causing that problem when connecting with the staff that they need to connect, because it was an urgent matter, I guess that needed to be addressed, and they. And they contacted me when I was in DC. So I don't know if you guys can look into that. What was it?
I actually took care of it, yes.
Oh, you fixed the problem?
Yes, and there are forms I'm familiar with since I come from the assessor's office, so I know exactly what he was looking for. But essentially, this is something that's done every year. So we should be looking for that. But I gave him, I created a finance email, generic, and told him to just send it there, and then we'll disperse to whoever is needed for now.
That's good, because it's for our tax rolls, right? And that's important because we need to pay who we need to pay, and that's the fire department. So that's one of the things. So, and he knew it was urgent because if we don't get it in time, then we can't pay them, and we don't want to go down that road again. The other thing is, he also asked, and I think I mentioned it before, I'm not sure who I mentioned it to, one of you guys, I'm not sure who. They wanted to, he wants to do a presentation here. It has to do with is with the properties that people that have paid off their property and have, they don't owe anything, they don't have a mortgage, there's been a lot of deeds that are being stolen, like properties that are fraudulent stuff that's happening, and there are actually people that are taking your property, and you have no rights to your property anymore because of the fraud that's being committed. So he wants to be here at the next meeting to do a presentation or to speak on it, to kind of like inform us of what we can do, what parameters we can put like safeguards for our community that can know what steps they need to take to protect themselves to make sure that they don't become a victim. Because, yeah, or reach out to him and see when's the perfect time that would work. I told him the next meeting, but whatever you guys can figure out, that would be good. Other than that, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend the roundup. I did attend it last year. This year, I was at the DC trip, so I couldn't make it. I just got back, like I said. But, yeah, I did get to go to the coronation for the Roundup Queens. That was very nice. I think it's really good to see everybody out there, the community, having a good time. I did watch a lot of the videos. I try to watch that link that they put up, but sometimes it would take me to it, and then sometimes it would just take me, can I help you? I'm like, no, I'm not asking a question. I just wanted to see the video. But I thought it was a really nice event, so no, nothing happened, which is good. I'm glad that, what my worry is always is something going to happen with, you know, and things like this, people coming from other cities, and you just never know what might happen. So I'm glad that, how many years now? I forget. Yeah. Is this like 16? Well, what I want to say is that although the years that they've been doing this and we haven't had any incidents is, knock on wood, is great, is good. And I'm happy that we don't see anything like that happening, you know, because I don't want to be on the news and having to explain something that, I don't know, I wasn't here, I was in DC. But, no, but thank you, guys. Thank you, Myra, for really taking care of that. Because when I did call him back, that's why I was like, I knew that somebody had. I called him back, and he said, no, we got in contact, we took care of it. But I always heard that we had problems with our phones, though. Yeah, so I don't know.
I found out last Thursday it messed up the phone lines here.
Oh, so it's just sometimes, not that there is a consistent problem with our phone lines. Okay, now we can, Megan, you can go on with the what's on closed session.
Yes, Mayor, and I would first ask for a motion to, or a request to take item number nine off the calendar per the acting city manager. Just remove item number nine. And then also move item number eight, conference with legal counsel, public employee appointment. Move that up to number four. Please start off with that since we're going to do, we're going to involve a Zoom call, and then the others will drop down, and I'll read them all as they should be if that's agreeable with your council.
That's fine. So now we can move on to closed session. Thank you.
She needs us to make a motion to delete number nine.
Can we just table it or delete it?
No, just delete it.
You want to just delete it?
Yes, for now.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to delete item number nine from closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Item is deleted, thank you.
Thank you. And so if it's agreeable with you, Mayor, then I'll just read the closed session items into the record. So is there, I think you might ask, well, there's no one here but Public Session.
That's what I was going to say.
Public comment on closed session. But closed session agenda will then be as follows. Item number four, conference with legal counsel, public employee appointment, city manager, government code section 54957. Item number five will then be conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Parlier versus Sarbat Bala pursuant to government, code section 54956.9. The item number six will be conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Torres versus City of Parlier, government code section 54956.9. Item number seven will be conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Garza versus City of Parlier, government code section 54956.9. And lastly, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Hall versus City of Parlier, and that'll be item number eight pursuant to government, code section 54956.9.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll move into closed session. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
I think you're...
Okay, you guys can stop laughing. Okay, so we're back from closed session. Diego, I don't know why you're sitting over there. There is nothing to report and time is 8:43. Thank you.